We'll call this work session Monday, July 18th to order. Invocation given by Mr. Stewart and the pledge allegiance by Mr. Dawg.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the very many blessings you've given us. We ask now that you watch over these proceedings and they'll be pleasing in your sight. Please watch over the citizens and employees of Scottsboro as we go about our daily lives. Watch over the military, bring them home safely to their families. Guard God and direct us so in the end we may all come to thee. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one tonight's present a certificate of election to Mr. Williams, Mayor.
To Jason Allen Williams, this is your adversary of the city council of the city of Scottsboro, Alabama. That here to forward the claim of being newly elected as office of place number four on Scottsboro Board of Education. No opposition adequately qualified against you in the election to be paid again for the city of Scottsboro. Newly done on this, the eleventh day of July, 2022. This is your being of the people election. So, Josh. Your blessing.
Thank you. Number two, the public hearing for alcohol license for Publix. This is time and place for the public hearing. Anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? No one here against this. Ms. Phillips, will you do the investigative report?
The applicant is Publix Alabama LLC, number 1830. Type of license, retail beer and wine off premise. Located at 24540 John T. Reed Parkway. There were no businesses or residences within the 300 feet to survey. The nearest church and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections are all pending final inspection and zoning verification complies.
Thank you. This conclude the public hearing. We'll move this to next week for a vote. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, he won't be here. Okay. Number three, announce Main Street Scottsboro Board vacancy. Ms. Phillips?
There is a vacancy on the Main Street Scottsboro Board. Anyone interested should apply in writing to Main Street Director Katie Kirkland by 4:30 PM on August 1st, 2022.
Thank you. Number four, discuss the Scottsboro pickleball complex. Mr. Olliness? Let me get you a picture up there for you.
I'd like to thank Council President Bailey, all the members of the council, and Mayor McCain to this opportunity for us to come together to you and tell you about a terrific new addition that we are proposing to the city of Scottsboro. There are four parts to this presentation, and I'd like to think of it as a four-part harmony. I hope that when we are finished, it is music for your ears. All presentations are relatively short, so we will not be here all night, so don't be alarmed. There may be many questions, I think there will be many questions, that will be answered during the course of the four presentations, so if possible, please hold your questions until all presentations are finished. Council President Bailey has a new pickleball paddle. There it is right there. I would go out and see what's under it. So, that's what pickleball paddle looks like. And ball is a softball size, looks like a wicker ball, has what holds to it. So, the game is played there, and I'll talk about the courts and the size and things like that. But pickleball is the fastest going sport in the United States, and there's different reasons for it, which I will get into. Number one, it's easy to play. It does not require a high level of physical activity or athletic talent. Like tennis, it is similar in that fact, you have to hit the ball across from it. And court size is about half the size of a tennis court. Doubles play is most popular, unlike tennis where singles is relatively popular, but doubles play is by far the most popular in pickleball. There's less running and less strenuous activity, nonetheless, you get plenty of exercise. Now, this is a unique thing that makes pickleball different from all other sports, I think it makes it why it's so popular. One of the unique main features is it's open play. In tennis, you have to call up, you have to get a mag set up, get doubles with the other people, and you play with those same three other people for an hour or two or whatever, and then you leave, that's it. With pickleball, it's open play, so you have a certain time in Scottsboro, Thursday night at seven o'clock. Anybody and everybody who wants to play pickleball comes. You don't have to schedule, don't have to do anything, you show up. And you show up, and then we have a competition court, which is a court set aside for the more competitive players. And then we have other courts, all the other courts are set up for people who just, you know, regular, regular one play. And what happens is you play a game, and it lasts anywhere from 10 to 12 minutes. After that game, the winners stay and the losers step aside. Whoever is next in line, and there's a process for getting who's next in line, two more players come out. You switch partners. You never play with the same partner, unless by chance you rotate through. So, you're not stuck with the same partner, you play with different partners after two or three games. If the winners have won two or three, as a matter of courtesy, they usually step out. And then 10 or 15 minutes, they're back in again because the courts, people are rotating in and out. And we, on our Thursday nights, we have anywhere from eight to 15 or so. So, we'll get two courts filled with eight people, and sometimes three courts filled with other people. And so, we're constantly rotating people in and out. The folks that are waiting, they're sitting there watching and socializing. And what, that's the unique feature is, number one, you don't have to worry about setting up a game. Number two, you play as much as you want to, and you socialize as much as you want to. And so, consequently, the social aspects of it and the, and the lack of effort that you don't have to expend trying to set up matches really makes this very unique and completely different from all other sports. So, that is one of the reasons why it is the fastest going sport. Open play can start at like I said, at seven o'clock. The benefits to the city of Scottsboro, well, it's a new recreational amenity for the citizens, for the prospective citizens and visitors to our area. It's located for easy access to baseball, softball, and all the facilities on Higginrove Drive. Pickleball tournaments can be brought off to town, and one of our presenters will talk extensively about that. The Scottsboro Pickleball Complex, so I've got my little pointer here, and I'll point to the one on the right. This is the complex on the right, and I think you all should have in your package along with that, the site sign. So, it's on Higginrove Drive, it's right next to the golf cart, it's on the north end of the parking lot for the Veteran Defiant Complex. So, it's located, all tremendous sports facilities are located on Higginrove Drive, and this is, the site is already there, of course, you may recall this is the site, it's just south of the Old Suri Street Plant. Nothing is there that they used to fulfill over some years, so, but it's a, it's a perfect site. The site is, six courts are proposed, with a capacity of an additional six courts, and you can see that on the plane. In addition to this, the six courts are, they're lighted, and they're designed per USA Pickleball American Sports Builders Association specifications for recreational and tournament play, meaning we got, we have fences, we have dividing fences, we have the sidelines, all of that is according to the focus of specifications, which is very conducive then, not only to say recreational play, but tournament play as well. It has a 24-foot common area between courts three and four. Again, that is unique, a tennis court wouldn't have that. The pickleball courts at nighttime, for example, when the sun's not shining, people may sit there and watch the games and then be next in line, if you will, they're rotating in and out from there. So, when you have tournaments, that would be a very popular place, people would bring their tents, their small pop-up tents, and sit there and watch, watch the players. They can see all three courts on one side, or obviously face the other side, and see all three courts on the other side. So, again, that's a unique feature of a pickleball complex, a tennis, tennis complex would not have, they would just have features somewhere. For tournament play, it's designed also, so in front of the courts, all of that area is landscaped, it's flat. The bleachers could be put there, or tents, pop-up tents, and seats for spectators for tournaments. The, it has a pavilion, and you know, you think of a pavilion, and the pavilion is 28 by 38 feet, very large. You think, why do we need a pavilion? Well, that's one of, again, when people are waiting to play, they need a place to sit. And if it's, they don't want to be sitting out in the sun during the day, that would not be very conducive to people coming around. So, the pavilion is particularly located on the south side, looking to the north, so that the southern sun, it's not exposed to the southern sun. And people, as they're looking, they're looking to the north, away from the sun, looking at, looking at play. It has a full field of view to all six courts. Courts three and four in the middle, the fence is designed low there so that they can see courts three and four on the pavilion without looking through the fence. The other fence is eight feet high, and that's needed for windscreen. This is wide open there, there is no barrier to wind. If we didn't have any wind, we wouldn't need any windscreen. The ball, unlike tennis, you have an overhead smash on the tennis ball, it'll bounce 10, 12 feet high through the fence. You can't knock the pickleball over the fence, smashing it, it just doesn't bounce that high. So, you don't need big fences, but we do have eight-foot fences with windstreets because the pickleball is susceptible to wind movement if you have a lot of wind, and so that is, that's why we have that. So, that's the, that's the main features of the site. The pavilion has bathrooms in it, and it has a small storage room as well. So, the pavilion can be used not only for people waiting, but for tournaments. This is where you set up the tournaments, this is where you have all of your public stuff for your tournaments, and very convenient for that. Let's talk about the money. Less than $400,000. I got some specific quotes, budget quotes from different people, including the Lauer Brothers, that do tennis courts and pickleball courts, and I've got other quotes from other facilities. The fencing, fencing is, believe it or not, $62,000 for the 400. I mean, that's, so a lot of these figures, and that's, that's a quote, hopefully the materials and some of that stuff will be coming down at a certain point in time, and hopefully it will be approved. But other, other material costs are quite susceptible. The estimate sheet you have in front of you there totals in the 360,000 range, but for budget purposes, less than $400,000 I'm saying because of the timeframe, if it is approved, material pricing and availability is quite volatile, and I, nobody hoped it was going to be, but I did update some to account for that. So, that's the, that's, that's a proposed budget. The site preparation would be done by the city of Scottsboro, it's worked in time. The water and sewer, we asked for it, has donated, will go make the piping and the fees for the sewer and water lines. The electric power board will install all the elect, the site electrical, just like they did on the Patriots Walkway, the lights, everything. It'll be, the cost for those materials are included in the, in the budget, that's the , the pavilion will donate all of that. And all the engineering and construction management will be donated by myself. Conservatively, the value of these donated services is over $70,000. Separate contracts with the city would be done for the specialty contract work that would have to be done with the pavilion, the block work, separate the concrete work, things like that, that would be done. So, what we're requesting, and I'll turn it over to the following presenters, is your consideration and approval and budget of the project so that it can be constructed. So, I'd like for Glenn Wright, if you'd say a few words.
I also want to thank all of our fellow people that are with us tonight. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to speak to you on this. My views more from a personal experience, Mr. Bailey and I, we played basketball years ago on Sundays, that's how we got our competitive fire. We did it for seven, eight, nine, 10 years, and unfortunately, when you get to a certain age, it becomes very difficult. And I switched to tennis. Jim, Boyton, Glenn Washington, Ryan Parker, some others, it was probably a good core of, you know, six, seven of us that would play once or twice a week. And then one day, that last, I guess about eight, nine, 10 years, and then one day, Boyton up while we were playing tennis, he says, hey, I saw this. It's called pickleball, it's really neat, I think we should try it. And that was about two years ago. And so, we did. And we, we got together, next time, we went on Amazon, bought a couple of cheap rackets just to see and figure out how to play it and everything. And we looked. Matter of fact, we haven't played tennis since. Tennis became a past sport for us, pickleball became the sport that we wanted to play. And then you read how the second year of the role of the fastest running sport in the United States, I just read it for John Barry, Los Angeles Lakers guard, over 70, he ran out of competition, he just couldn't play basketball anymore. Well, two years ago, he picked up pickleball. Now, at 77, he's one of the top pickleball players in the nation in his age group. And it's a fantastic sport. Couple of reasons that I love it is, it's much easier on the body, and somebody from the body than tennis or basketball is. As Jim said, it's less, less area to cover, so not as much room to run. Most of the play is at the net, so you're most of the time, you're six, seven feet away from your opponent in that space where it's more reaction than it is chasing. So, I like that aspect of it, easier on the body, but as Jim spoke, the social aspect. Because you're that close, not only do you socialize when you're not playing, and we jab each other a little bit during, during the games too, you know, to socialize from that aspect. So, it's, it's conducive for you to be able to do that and to have fun and to enjoy each other. And the thing that I've noticed is, if we play pickleball now, we're very, there are less and less people playing tennis, there's more and more people that are playing pickleball while we're there. But the great thing about pickleball, that I don't think we could do in tennis anymore, is it spans all generations. When we're out there on Thursday night, you've got twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, sixties, and seventies age groups represented. And I play with the 20-year-olds just like Jim does. And so, it's great from that standpoint that it brings us all together, and we can all enjoy each other regardless of our age. And that's, that's unique, I think, that you can be competitive with a 20-year-old in the sport. So, I just want to share some of my thoughts with you, tell you how, how I've been doing pickleball, what it means to us, and you know, when we first started pickleball, we probably had, once again, six or seven people in the rotation. This spring, Jim was like, have we visited with Phil, he'd appear in front of us a few minutes, and he's, they had Pickler and Gunnar. Vision we can't be allowed to play with them, their group's in there. We started a group meeting, group to be able to communicate. Jim's got over 50 people that, you know, he said we may have 15 or so on a Thursday night, but it's not the same 15. So, there's over 50 people in our group now, in the city, that are participating in pickleball, and we hope to see that number continue to grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Everybody, I might mention that probably of those 50, a good third of them were women. And in Gunnarville, Phil will say the same thing, that's a thing that when I, Horton and I went down there a couple of months ago, the first time I went down, half the people were women. And so, it just, it spans generations, spans, it spans everything. So, at this time, I would like to introduce Phil Moss, the head Pickler, as Mike said, from the city of Gunnarville, to share with you on what we're doing in that city.
I've heard there are plenty of times, we play quite a bit, and I got a score, we play Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday morning, you know, we usually three to four hour session. Friday, Sunday, and Monday night have become popular. And we use the group meeting app to, we'll see someone hop on there and say, please up for pickleball, and me, 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 and maybe four, five, or six, and game on. Kind of reflecting kind of. We have about 110 people on our group team channel now. In the evenings, we have anywhere from 10 to 15 people that are playing. Some of the people may have played earlier in the day, or may end up staying there until 12 o'clock at night until the lights go on. My wife told me I was addicted to pickleball, so like any good husband, I went and looked that up on the internet, and it said, pickleball is addictive, it's cheap, and it's wiggly. Well, pickleball started in 2015 in Steve Douglas's driveway. That place became known as the Pickleball Palace, we had another place to play, and so we would gather people on a, on a Saturday morning or a Sunday afternoon and play in pickleball matches. It started off with four people, and then that group just grew and grew. People would drink watermelon and stuff to eat, and we would play there for hours. We demonstrated pickleball for the RSTP people in Gunnarville, had we picked up several players from them. And 2016, we taped off two courts in the rec center, and the people just kept coming in, so we taped off four door courts for a total of six in the rec center, and just kept going from there. In 2017, a couple was visiting Gunnarville, a Gunnarville Realtor, and they were looking to buy a home, they planned to retire in Gunnarville. One question he asked the Realtor was, do you have outdoor pickleball courts? And Realtor made a quick call to the rec center, and they said, we have six indoor courts, but no outdoor. And the people said, we're going to withdraw our off-road hump, and they went to another city. In 2019, we got five dedicated courts outside, four of those have permanent, some one you have to bring your own with. We averaged about 20 players for each session, and that number continues to grow. We get new players virtually every week. The maximum number of players that we added in one session is 36. We had 32 last Thursday to play, so 32 people in four courts. Matt Bryan, our rec guy, knows we need more courts, and he's looking to see how we're going to do that. Pickleball Lake is, is just one group in Gunnarville, it is the largest group, but there are other groups there that play also. Our group is fine for other groups that play in Gunnarville and adjacent towns, not including We have several couples that play with us who have purchased winter homes in Gunnarville. Don and Elizabeth are from Minnesota, they're up there now, they'll be returning in the fall. Mike and Pam are from Hilton Head, and they're here now for the summer. Dave and Susan are from Madison, they're here for the summer. Carol and Jeffrey are from Florida, they were here looking to buy a home, didn't find exactly what they're looking for, they plan to return in a week or two and look again. And once they find the house they want, then they'll buy. They enjoy playing with us, and just couldn't, couldn't give us enough praise on that. The US Pickleball Association are governed pickleball play in the United States. They have multiple ambassadors in all 50 states. The USA, the USA TA ambassador for North Alabama is Greg Royer, he's here. He's a four-year-old player that's won medals in tournaments in multiple states. He recently won a medal at the Indoor National Championship. He's a certified pickleball instructor, and extremely knowledgeable about all aspects of pickleball. And on top of that, he's just really a great guy. Greg?
I just wanted to give you a little information of what's going on in the area of pickleball Mission A-Ram, A-Ram is converting four tennis courts into six pickleball courts. That's as we speak. Athens has just started a new facility, 18 new courts. Huntsville has 15 current outdoor courts, and we're planning eight gyms, city gyms that we use, each gym has three courts. They got a gym open every day, somewhere to play every day. The Huntsville Pickleball Club has 415 members. There's 1,000 people playing in the Madison County area, and they're also planning a new facility, courts they got another one. Right now, pickleball is kind of like the housing market, you can't outbuild it. No matter how many courts you build, they're going to be four. Just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Madison. Senior Madison is saying an extravagant pickleball facility, they want it to be the best in state. Birmingham currently has 32 courts under construction in four different locations. That's what people are doing. Talk about how they're going to pay for it. On average, a pickleball tournament, 300 people showing up for a tournament will bring in $100,000 in revenue for the city. That's in hotels, meals, expenses. Actually, Huntsville is hosting a Junior National Tennis Tournament this week with 300 players, they say it'll bring in $800,000 in revenue for the city. That's just to compare. What pickleball has done, City of Clay, Alabama, population 10,000, smaller than Scottsboro. Hosted the Alabama Open a couple of months ago. 300 players from eight states came to play in Clay, Alabama. They had four existing courts, they opened six more to date of the tournament, and they strike off 10 more temporary courts on their tennis court. Alabot, Alabama, as I know to Alabot will. Alabot has hosted three tournaments in the last six months. They've had 500 participants in their three tournaments. Hoover, Alabama, well, Hoover's a big city. Hoover hosted the Indoor National Championships a couple of months ago. They taped off 24 courts in the Hoover Mid, they rented the entire facility. Last year, they had 1,100 people come to the tournament. This year, they had 700 players play over five days. The reason they had less players this year, Okalaka had another tournament two weeks later with 800 people there. Okalaka, population 30,000, has one of the top 20 pickleball facilities in the country. Okalaka has invested over $3 million in a pickleball facility. They just finished a $2 million addition. They have 24 covered courts. They host five tournaments a year. The, the, the new courts were $2 million, the new addition, they said they'll pay for it in three years with the tournaments that happen. On Okalaka's original 12 courts last year, in Okalaka, when you go down there, they record and register everything for you. You play a tournament, you sign up for the tournament, they ask, how many hotels, did you spend, how many nights you stayed in a hotel, how much did you spend? So, they got all the records. On their 12 courts, not counting tournaments, last year, they had 20,000 rounds of pickleball play on their original 12 courts. of pickleball play on their original twelve courts. In their five tournaments they host this year, they have two thousand people show up, players for the five tournaments they're going to host this year. One of the reasons everybody, all the city governments are talking about pickleball right now, there was a mayor's meeting for the state of Alabama a couple of months ago in, in Birmingham. Opa-ica gave a presentation, told everybody how much money they make. Now, everybody wants in on it. So that's what pickleball is doing in here. Um, another thing, in Huntsville, we're talking about how fast it's growing. The Huntsville Pickleball Club puts on their website, anybody that signs up free and ever plays can come out and they'll give them a free lesson. Last year, we had two hundred people take their first free lesson. So that's just a little history of how pickleball's growing in the area.
Any questions?
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Olonees, on this?
I've got a comment. I believe if more people knew about the availability of people playing pickleball now, there would be more people there. I'm sure a lot of people don't know about it. I did until a few weeks ago.
There are about four million people playing pickleball right now. Uh, we expect courts to continue for over a year. And there's kind of, racket ball popped out in about twelve meetings, and there are a number of reasons for that. One is just the availability of them. To be able to tell if a racket ball is difficult. You've got a, you've got a room that's all closed in, and it's hard to tell if it's a racket, uh, pickleball is not like that. Pickleball will continue to grow, and the estimates are, but many times past for the racket ball. So it's not going to be a splash and say it's going to be here for, for many years.
I was at a meeting in Montgomery back in the fall with Tarkog, and that was one of the things that they brought up in one of the meetings, how, with some of the rec departments, how it was growing in their cities.
Uh, Mr. Olonees, where, where's everybody playing now, our local people? Where do they play?
At the tennis courts, uh, the, uh, Donny allowed us to strike off two of the courts, so we have some lines, probably not coming, they're painted, but they can remove. And, uh, you know, hopefully, pretty soon, I'll be asking him if we can do the third court. But, uh, what I do is, uh, I have some chalk, and I have gone over and chalked off the third line several times where we had three courts full, twelve people. We had, you know, more than twelve people there, and they pretty needed it, so I'm down there with the, popping chalk lines and pretty chalked down them. So that's how it is.
Anyone else have any questions, uh?
Uh, you know, I'm interested in this, and I would like to look at our budget, see where we are. We're getting close to a new budget year and, uh, see where we are standing right now and what maybe projections are for next year. Uh, I would, I would like to see this go.
Uh, Mr. Wood, since you're here tonight, how would this affect your department, of course? Uh, this would be another addition to the Recreation Department.
Well, it would help a lot. Um, there's, you know, I've played at two tournaments in other rec departments that I've played in. Um, and they have state, uh, recreation meetings that are always showcased, and they're always played. Um, most of them have, uh, volunteer trainers, volunteer coaches. Typically, one person in the rec department is, is kind of in charge, is kind of organizing that program. So they'll coordinate with the volunteers, and they'll make sure that the type of setup, advertising is done, supplies are in place, and then they, you know, the volunteers, both those other places I played, kind of ran with that. So as far as us being involved, uh, there's double tennis players in our departments. Um, so it, it will add a lot of extra programming time, but if, you know, when we come to doing the tournaments, uh, we would definitely help pickleball too.
Well, that, that's a whole nother thing, is the tournaments, you know? Who would handle a tournament? You know, if we decided that was the next step?
Lot of volunteers.
Yes.
There's actually organizations around the country that you can invite them to come in, and they'll either run your tournament for you, or they'll show you how to run it.
Okay.
And most of the time, they do that. Some of them do it for free, and some of them do it for a very nominal charge. That's why Opa-ica did, they had one of the national organizations come in and show them how to run a lot. If one thing, you run a tournament with fifty people, it's another one with five.
Yes.
And they'll bring somebody in, you know, USA Pickleball, send somebody in and show you how to run that tournament.
I mean, a complex this, this large, that's, that's the next step. If you're going to build one this large, you're going to want to host tournaments. And so that's why, I want to throw that out there to everyone, you know, far as, we need to make sure we have a plan in place for that.
The beauty of the location is the fact that it's right across the street from the tennis courts. So, you know, uh, one of the facilities, I think, uh, temporarily stripped off, we take or whatever, the other tennis courts. So we have a huge number of courts that we could put in play. Uh, six, if these were six, we have six others, and we get at least two on each court. I don't know, and every tournament, that they do.
Usually, but each tennis court will handle two, two pickleball courts. So if you've got six, six, then you would have twelve temporary courts in six tournaments, and you'd have eighteen more courts.
Wow, yeah.
On, on the drawing, if we had tournaments, is there enough room around it for people to watch and see it?
Yes, there are. The whole front side, uh, they're facing, uh, the, between the parking lot and the, and the tennis courts. Yes, that whole front side will be graded out such that people can sit there. The twenty-four foot area between the two tennis courts is another thing. And of course, the ends, they could sit. Uh, whether they bring tents or, or features up, I remain, you know, remains to see, we could work that out. Uh, but, uh, so there is, um, and, and certainly, I'm open to suggestions of there's some changes that we can make inside plans of company, but, but right now, there's a, a restricted area where people can watch.
Uh, Mr. Olonees, the, uh, maintenance of these courts, uh, resurfacing, you were saying earlier, like, every ten years or so?
Well, the, I think they're getting ready to, looking at, um, layer, uh, the tennis courts, and I think they've been in for about ten years, have they?
Yeah, and that's, that's stretching it a little bit, though. That was, should be done a little more frequently.
Yeah, it does. Um, so, so yes, that would be.
Another thought I had, if we should move forward with this, uh, the, the place in the middle, it's, uh, twenty-four foot wide? Can you put a, a roof on that and go straight down like a, like a hallway from, leading from the pavilion?
We can. I, I priced it, in some shade, uh, twenty-four feet wide by thirty feet long, not the full length. It was twenty thousand dollars. Um, and that, that was the least expensive, another one they're recording more. But that isn't to say that, that we couldn't build a, a facility for that. So that's, that option is, that option is there. I specifically did not include it because I thought, well, let, let me, uh, add the pavilion, you know, because the pavilion's more important. Yeah. The pavilion just a little bit, I did it worth the twenty thousand dollar sunshade, knowing we could always come back.
Sure.
And see how it works. People may just prefer to bring the tents and set up, or they may, may like, I don't know. So that's, that's a future, possible future issue, I guess.
I'd be worried about putting a roof over that part, just for the fact that the drainage off the roof onto the courts. I, I don't know how.
We'd have to, uh, we'd have to cut it and downspout.
Yeah.
Actually, that's a good point. I may have to design some drainage. Also, if I helped out during the, Donny and I talked with this, is, is visibility on the city website, on the rec, rec from website. Right now, there isn't. And, uh, you know, advertising, pickleball advertising, um, we have open play every Thursday night, advertising the sign up. Uh, some people, Donny gives you some, not that we, and we have some pads, they get purpose, the balls, I found people out, ten dollars a piece from them. It's the best deal in town to get pickleball, two pickleballs in a pad for ten bucks. And about fifteen people, so Donny has some money, and then he has some pickleballs and some panels. So, uh, but we need, we need the constant visibility from the websites and the Facebook and that.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone else have any questions on the pickleball complex? Or any suggestions? All right.
I ask that, we ask this around, put it on next work session.
Okay. Next work session?
It's great.
All right, well, we're going to move this to the next work session. Give us time to go over the figures and discuss it again.
All right. Do you know where I'm at?
Yes, sir. Definitely.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, number five, discuss the square irrigation repairs. Ms. Reynolds?
I'm trying to follow pickleball. I just have a bill. We, the Main Street plant is a flower basket on the square, and apparently our irrigation system doesn't seem, it's not working. So we didn't know it till we had a bunch of dead flower baskets. The Largen came out, worked on those, um, on the irrigation system, and then it's fixed.
You see in your pocket, you got a bill here for the irrigation repairs. So, anyone have any questions? This is for around the square. I think a lot of us have heard about the dead flowers around the square, so.
Yes.
So, uh, this is one of the reasons for it, so. No one has any questions, we'll put that on next week's meeting. All right, thank you.
If Richie can perform miracles, I'm either in my front yard. It's all dead too.
All right, number six, discuss the opioid litigation settlement resolution. Ms. Kinmer?
Uh, this is not a complete resolution of the opioid resolution, uh, litigation. As you all can recall, uh, we set the, there's been a settlement with one opioid defendant. Uh, the state of Alabama has just negotiated, uh, two additional settlements, one with McKissin Company and one with J and J, totaling approximately two hundred and twelve million dollars, which will be split between the state and approximately a hundred and fifty subdivisions of the state. Uh, I think the gross amount for the city in the last, uh, litigation was eighty thousand dollars. I'm not sure what the amount the city will get out of these two particular settlements. They have, who are lawyers, enclosed a resolution with which will authorize Whitney to sign and be the contact person when other settlements come. There are several hundred other defendants, or potential defendants, in this litigation. Uh, and they are anticipating that there will be, over a period of time, a number of settlements, and some coming very, very quickly. So the resolution basically gives the clerk the authority to acknowledge, uh, the settlement and sign the paperwork.
Okay.
Of course, she would bring it to your attention.
Yes. Anyone have any questions on that? Uh, we've been through this process once before, so. No questions, we'll put that on next week's meeting then. Thank you. Number seven, discuss the resolution establishing the use of electronic vote counting devices. Ms. Phillips?
This is just a routine election resolution, um, to authorize to use the DS two hundred and auto mark A two hundred electronic vote, vote counting system in the upcoming municipal election.
Okay. Anyone having questions on that? No questions, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Number eight, discuss the resolution setting pay, the rate of pay for elec, election officials. Ms. Phillips?
This would just set the rate of pay for my inspectors at one twenty-five for the day, and all other election fi, officials, one hundred dollars per, for the day of the election.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that? No questions, we'll move that to next week's meeting. And number nine, discuss the resolution appointing the election officials. Ms. Phillips?
And this is just to appoint, um, you have the names of everyone on the list, um, to work the municipal election on August twenty-third.
And you have that in your pocket, list of everyone's names? Anyone have any questions on that? No questions, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Okay. That'll conclude the meeting, and I assume that the four guys that signed up, they've already spoken, so. But we have no delegations then, so we'll move to reports. Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank y'all for coming.
Mr. Ashman?
I don't have anything. Thank.
Saved you for last. I knew you had some. Thank you. I don't have anything tonight. Just remember, next Monday, we'll have a council meeting. So, that being said, we're.